I call the order of the, are we, call the order of the Winfield Town Council meeting with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, in the judicial with liberty and justice of our own.
Roll call, Mike.
Mr. Zach Eaver.
Present.
Mr. Tim Clayton.
Present.
Mr. David Anderson.
Yep.
Ms. Amy Blaker, right here. Mr. John Duensky, not here.
Absent.
Uh, Mr. Nick Bellar.
Here.
Uh, Chief Robert Byrd.
Here.
Uh, Tony Clark.
Not gonna make it.
Not here. Uh, Mr. Sean Finney.
Here.
Mr. David Oshin.
Present.
And we have the chief from the fire department, he's present, and I, Michael Lambert, good evening.
Thank you, Michael. First up, we have public comment related to agenda items. Anybody wishing to speak on an agenda item? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to citizens requesting placement on the agenda not related to agenda items. Mr. Corcoran.
It's me.
Good to see you again. Appreciate you coming.
My name is Chris Corcoran. I live at sixty-seven forty-four Deer Creek Court. Uh, a couple of things I wanted to bring up today first was on behalf of the Deer Creek State's HOA, uh, thank you to Tony, to Nick, and to Tim and the Stormwater Board for working with Rod Nagel and the board for looking at the drainage ditch along Hundred Ninth and getting that on the schedule. It's never easy to, I'm sure, hear from all the different neighborhoods and HOAs that need something and some sort of project, so thank you for coming down here. But thank you to the three of you for working with Rod and getting us on the schedule. Very much appreciated. Uh, the second thing, as part of my ongoing education, so I'm always trying to learn new things and add things to my file of data, which is never-ending. Uh, I've spoken with Dave Anderson about this a little bit, but in regards to Senate Act, Senate Bill Number One from the twenty-twenty-five Indiana State Legislative Session, it was signed into law in April, but I hadn't really dug into it. I think it's been mentioned, uh, a little bit before, how might, uh, it affect local governments, towns like Winfield, and that there are some concerns with it, so I took the time to try and read the entire bill, which on first glance I realized was three-hundred-and-forty-five pages long. I don't know if that's normal for state legislation, but just right away you could tell this is way more complicated than something that just is potentially gonna regard property tax deductions, which is what it claims to say. And then when you look at the summary digest on the General Assembly website, it just is a giant paragraph of forty-seven some items that aren't organized, they're not grouped, right off the bat. There's no way to really understand what's going on, so it's very helpful, um, for me to speak with members of the council like yourselves. Uh, Dave took the time to talk to me a little bit, and I had told a few friends of mine and some family to watch the YouTube stream, 'cause I would just like to hear from, uh, the three of you or the council in general, how that is going to affect Winfield positively, negatively, because it seems like the, the way it's written seems to be a little cagey from the General Assembly standpoint, where it says, hey, this is a property tax deduction, or at a minimum, if the value of your house goes up, your property tax rate will only go up a little bit, or it might go down. But on the other hand, Winfield has to enact a, a local income tax to a certain extent. So, it's like you're, you're potentially decreasing property tax, but then you're adding a local income tax. So just hearing from, uh, from you on what your opinion is on that, how can Winfield protect itself from citizens that aren't educated that are just gonna see at some point in twenty-twenty-seven or twenty-twenty-eight, oh, there's gonna be a local income tax. Well, that's not good. And just trying to, to help protect the town and the town council from, from any sort of, not negative press, but backlash from the public on something that was really outside of the council's control, 'cause it's just what the, the state legislature's doing. Um, so just, that was all I was curious on, is how do you think that's gonna affect Winfield in the coming years, and what can you do to protect the council and the town itself? So, that's all I have for today. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Chris. Hi. Um, I'll kind of start. One thing I would say is that the Senate Enrolled Act One is not final. I mean, it's, it's been passed, it's, it is likely gonna be revised over the next couple of years, based on kind of what we're hearing in Indianapolis. Like you said, that isn't something that, um, that we had, that we were directly involved in. I mean, I think there's some people, some, some people who reached out to stakeholders and local government, trying to get input. You know, Representative Alatoff has reached out and a few others, and I think that's good to have that dialogue. But, um, the association of, of, uh, local municipalities, I mean, they, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but essentially it was almost unanimous. Every municipality was kind of complaining about what was happening as far as funding, and what's this gonna do to town budgets and city budgets across the state. I think Winfield is gonna be relatively insulated from that, just because we run lean and we try, you know, we're a young town, we, we don't, you know, we don't overspend, we try to be responsible with how we manage projects and that kind of thing, so the impact probably won't be as severe as some of these debt-laden towns and cities across the state. Um, but the other side of that, like you said, the narrative was, well, there's gonna be this tax reform, and this is gonna help homeowners. Maybe, maybe, and maybe that's hopefully the case, especially once it's all flushed out in the legislature, maybe that's what happens. But what we're kind of planning for is, like you said, we're gonna be forced almost by the legislature to pass local income tax, to pass certain road impact fees, and, and some of these things which we don't do now, because we're trying to keep our taxes low, we're trying not to overburden residents. And so it's almost like, you know, it's almost the juice-squeezed analysis, I don't know if, I don't know if it's worth it, but I think a lot of our residents are gonna be upset when it comes time to pass an income tax, which we may not have a choice on, because the legislature's gonna say, um, if you want access to these funds, and this is kind of what we're seeing coming down. And like I said, a lot of this may change over the next couple of years, but what we're starting to see is, well, if you want access to money for roads, you need to pass a wheel tax. You know, and from a council's perspective, we may say, well, why? We don't, we don't wanna do that to our residents. Well, we may not have a choice anymore, because if, by legislation, if you want access to money, you have to do this. And so the money that we were, you know, previously had access to, where we didn't need a wheel tax, now we may have to do that. And that could, that trickle may affect other funds that we have, and I, I can't tell you specifics, 'cause I don't know, you know, once it's fully implemented, I don't know what it's gonna look like. Um, so some of this is speculation, but I, I think there's a lot of concern from local municipalities that their budget's gonna be cut, and if they don't make it up in income tax or high fees, then they're just gonna have to lay off staff, they're gonna have to reduce projects, they're not gonna be able to do some of those things. I think Winfield is positioned, you know, uniquely, because we have kept our fees and our taxes relatively low, you know, one, some of the lowest in the state. We manage our budget, you know, fairly well. I think we, we stay within our means, we don't overspend on projects, we don't, you know, we, we don't get ahead of ourselves in terms of, um, some of these bigger projects like other municipalities do, which will help us absorb some of that, where we may not have to make the layoffs and the cuts. I mean, like I said, we may, I don't know, but, you know, the hope is that we're trying to be ahead of it, and we have, you know, we have our analysts looking at it, we have our, um, our financial consultants looking at it, and we're trying to game this out over the next few years to see, well, where is this really gonna leave us? If we don't do this, what happens in a couple of years? What are the potential options? And then, you know, some of it is, we have to operate in what-if land and make decisions on hoping that things play out the way they are, but we're, we're trying to do our due diligence to make sure we're planning that all the way out. So as far as how does it affect the town, I think, um, I think a lot of it, you know, which is something that the, the town has probably not always done really well, which is messaging. I think a lot of what we need to do is message to the public that, look, we don't want a local income tax, that's why we don't have one. But if it's that, or not being able to hire cops, or that, or not being able to build sidewalks or roads, I think our residents would be understanding that the legislature may have put, you know, put a system in place where we don't have a choice anymore, and if we wanna continue to grow, and we wanna continue to hire cops and firemen and, you know, build more roads and all the street depart, I mean, all this stuff, then we may have to, we may be forced to do that. So, I think making sure that message is clear to the public of, we're trying to operate within the framework that is not in our control, and by doing that, this is where we are. You know, and so as those steps come up, I think each step, you just explained, this is why we're doing this, you know, as a result of legislative change or budgetary changes just internally, 'cause some of those things aren't, it's easy to blame the legislature, but some of those changes need to come from the town, too, where we may need, we may need to be more efficient in what we do, or be more creative in what we're doing, and some of those things, too. So I think either way, just be able to explain that, be transparent about what we're doing.
Well, I, I think the key is, what revisions do they make? Right? 'Cause the feedback has been not good.
Right.
It's been bad, back down there, said this is terrible. Yeah, those are my words, it's terrible. Um, but I think the feedback has not been positive, I'll say that. Um, and just the one point I wanna key in on is, one, it's not something, if you, uh, I just was watching Chrome Point tonight, Pete Lamb was just talking about it on, or his web, or his webcast, but Valpo's been talking, everybody's been talking about it, because we're, it's, we're being forced to something, and it's, a part of it is, the state's saying, you have to do X in order to unlock Y. That's the problem. And before, we would apply for grants and other things, and...
We're talking about community crossings.
Well, I'm talking about anything, you know, in order, like, hey, you want, to Zach's point about the wheel tax, you want access to road funding from the state, well, you better have a wheel tax. You don't have a wheel tax. Our intention is never to have a wheel tax. But if you want road funding, you're gonna have, you know, you may have to pass the wheel tax in order to get access to large amounts of, of money to fix roads. Or, or, what, you know, in general, we receive grants and, I don't, we've done pretty well over the years, and millions of dollars in grants, with essentially no strings attached. Well, now they're attaching strings. And, um, you know, the income tax piece of it, they may say, yeah, you're gonna have to pass one if you want access to additional dollars. Now, there are caps to all this, by the way, it's not unlimited, nobody can sit up here and go, we're gonna put a five percent tax, and there's, I think it's one point two percent is the most you can go, and you have to vote on it every single year. So whoever sits here in the budget time, you have to vote. So, you know, it's, it's gonna be interesting to see how it shakes out, and as Zach said, I, I think the good part is, in being here as long as I've been here, we've done a good job of managing our money, and that, I think will be, our, our impact will be small, which is good, versus, like, I'll use example, Porter County, because they're kept, they're, when they enacted, then when the county enacted, the point five percent tax, now they're behind the gun. Some of these cities and towns like, in Porter County are worse off than, than Lake County. And everybody's gonna be impacted, there's nobody not impacted. The other piece, yeah, the other piece I would say to it as well, and this may change, may not, is that, not only is it, you know, to me, I always make, I always say, you know, the three hundred dollars, right? Because at the end, it was a one-time, three-hundred-dollar check you got back, that was it, so all this for three hundred bucks. And the other piece is that, uh, you are now, uh, the, you cannot, your, your property tax or your, uh, your assessment can't go up more than four percent. So if you look at our property taxes in town of Winfield, they all went up roughly about ten percent, the assessed value. So now they've capped it. And the problem when you cap it, but I can't, now I'm six percent down, right? So now I'm, I'm six percent behind. Well, just go do that over time. Winfield will continue to rise in terms of assessed value over time, and we're gonna be capped at the knees at four, not be able to capture any of those assessed dollars. So now we have to find, when we make that up. So who, who knows what the legislature will do in the short session next year, but I, I would say the feedback has been, like Zach said, universally, not good.
You know, I don't wanna rehash everything that they said, but, you know, where we're at, where, where we've been at with this town and everything, uh, working on such a lean schedule, uh, lean budget, um, we, we don't have the, I'll call it the bloat, that for decades that the bigger cities get, and that, so we've always been thin. Um, so, as Dave said, the impact isn't gonna be as huge on us. It, it's still, it's still huge, but in comparison to some of these other cities, it's, um...
We've done a good job.
Well, yeah.
I am, pat ourselves on the back.
Yeah.
Over the years, we've done a good job.
Keeping it...
Keeping it in check, and now it's, now it's gonna pay off to a certain extent.
But the issue that I see even, too, is that now, a lot of bigger projects that you might think of that you had that extra money to, to help work with, it, they gotta get pushed by the wayside. They gotta find, uh, other funding means to be able to do this, like, they kept, kept saying about a wheel tax, or, you know, a local income tax, any of those type of things, they're now forcing, the legislature's now forcing the towns and cities' hands. So what they, as I said, I believe this is to help one area in the state, to be exact, um, is what this whole thing is, so everybody else...
We're in Northwest Indiana.
Everybody else is the sins of our fathers that we gotta pay for.
We would be a giver down to the, the other municipalities.
I have one other point, Mark.
Certainly.
Only one.
So, on this point, there's all these potential roadblocks and problems from this one act, this one bill. When you look at all the bills that are introduced in any legislative session from the Senate, from the House, it's in the hundreds that are introduced, and then there's still so many that get enacted, how does the town of Winfield and the council keep up with all this stuff that's getting added to potentially the Indiana Code Law of what could affect or not affect Winfield in any circumstance? Is that, is that easy to come across? Are you guys notifying, or is it just try to keep up as it goes?
I think, I think some of it, and Zach maybe can, some of it is, we pay attention, some of it is Mr. Oshin over there pays attention, and we use whatever connections we have to do it. The other part of it is though now, we, we have to pay people to pay attention on our behalf, to watch what's going on, so things don't get slid in to something that may affect us or the greater Northwest Indiana area. Um, so, I, I mean, that's just an unfortunate piece that, it's just, I mean, every city or every, I won't say every city every time, but I'll say all the cities for sure do it, and because of our growth, we're having to do it as well. But that's only way to your point, with everything that's put in there, we can't keep track of it all.
And I would, go ahead, dude.
Don't overlook the personal development and participation of all of you. I talked to Zachary in the State House when he was lobbying for us in the final days of the session. We have active, activity by our council members and staff here. It's not unusual anymore, but at one time, it was really a surprise to see that happen. It's changed so much that you have to have your thumb on it, you have to be there talking to them, they have to be listening to you, and they need to know what Winfield needs, wants, and requires.
'Cause they're down there for us.
Yeah, I would just add that, you know, when we sit up here, it's not sitting up here and like, oh, the, you know, what you do, it's all the things behind the scenes that happen, such as Dave, Mr. Oshin just mentioned, you know, going down to the state, you don't get paid a lot of money to do this. I got a real job. And, and so, you know, but you do have to take time to go down there, because, to your point, it's hundreds of bills, you don't know, and you have to develop those relationships. I'll go back, you know, one of the, when, when Winfield was founded, it was founded at the lowest tax rate it could possibly be in the state, the lowest, like, not by a little bit, by a lot. And the town had a problem just trying to keep up. So through Senator Rick Niemeyer, you know, we, we went to various folks, we had Frank Mervin out here, no help, just wasn't, we wasted time.
First town budget approved was ninety thousand.
Yeah, and, yeah. And so, you know, we, we called everybody to try and help us figure this out, and I, I'll give all credit to Rick Niemeyer in this case, you know, he came in, we explained our situation to him, and the only way to raise the levy was to get special legislation down in Indianapolis. It's the only way you can do it. You can't sit here and do it. You have to get them to approve it through special legislation. Rick came in, understood it, and we went from the lowest to the second lowest. We wanted more, but that's the best we could get. And, but that's a one-time shot. You're not gonna get, you don't get too many of those. And so we went for what we could, and we got it, but that's allowed us now to get to where we're at, like, to actually be able to do things and have money and not Robin Peter to pay Paul, and, and do some of those things. It allows us to take a different look at how the city or how the town develops. But, I mean, these are the things that we do that never get seen up here, and if, you know, anybody contemplates in running up here, these are the things you're gonna have to do.
You know, part-time legislators.
That's it.
And legislators, we, uh, somebody told me to be the smartest person in the room. Well, if I'm not the smartest person in the room, which I'm not, um, you hire the smartest people in the room. So that's where we're able to, you know, between legal, between our financial advisors, between our, um, people downstate that we're talking to, to try and get it, we have to find the smartest people to be able to figure this out, 'cause it is a tough thing. It's a tough thing that we have to live with. We have to live with for somebody else's idea, and we'll, we'll manage it, we'll manage it. We don't wanna drop any services for our residents, keep our residents still happy, still going, and still try to provide all the services, streets, police, fire, you name it, go down the line of things, parks, amenities for everybody, you know, but it's on that lean budget still, so that's, it's tough.
Yeah, the one, the other thing I would add to that, Chris, is that, um, you know, we are part-time legislators, and most of us have, you know, we all have kids, we all have stuff going on, we all have jo, other, you know, full-time jobs, so it does limit that, but I think that's part of what you sign up for, is like, hey, you gotta go to these meetings in between things, and you gotta take some time off work, or, and, you know, going, whether it's going to Indianapolis and trying to lobby legislators or whatever. So we do that piece of it, and I think a lot of that is building relationships in the community, building relationships with other officials, you know, whether they're elected or appointed or anything else, and just being out there representing Winfield kind of all around. There are, I mean, it's easy, I think, for some people to fall in the trap of like, well, I'll just show up to the meeting and, and I get to vote, and, and I know everything that's going on. Not always, I mean, sometimes that's the case, but not always. Sometimes you have to put in a lot of legwork behind the scenes. So I think as a council, just collectively, we probably do a decent job of that, of putting the legwork in. But the other side of that, I mean, item number seven on our, on our agenda tonight is engagement for Bo's, and, you know, we have Dave Oshin always, you know, he's always involved in kind of town affairs, we have our town staff involved, but even up until this year, we never had anybody professionally lobbying in Indianapolis. And this is part of what we're involving Bo's on, is to say, hey, we need you guys mon, we need somebody monitoring this. We'll tell you the interests and the concerns of people in Winfield, you have to monitor the legislation and make sure, and so if we need to have those conversations, help us have those conversations with the people that we need to, so that we can make sure, whether it comes out the way we want it to or not, at least we're putting forth the best effort and saying, this is what people in Winfield care about, and this is what they're telling us. And we're, you know, we're able to have those conversations, kinda like to Tim's, like to Tim's point about, um, having the right consultants, having the right advisors, having those people who can put us in the room to make sure that we're at least stating our case, and, you know, like, you know, put our best foot forward, save the case, and then see where it goes. And, and so I think it's kind of both sides of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we have minutes to be approved.
Oh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the executive session of September twenty-third and the town council meeting of September twenty-third, as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Tim, a second by Dave. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. Staff report, Nick.
Uh, still pulling supermits here at the end of the year from the building department, uh, probably the big thing coming up this Saturday. Monica's not here, so I'll announce it. Uh, we have the trunk or treat this Saturday at Randolph Street Park from three to five, so everyone come out, have a good time. We're gonna have some food trucks here this year. It was really popular last year, so we're scaling it up a little bit.
Nice.
To meet the crowds that we saw last year. That's it.
I'll tell you, last year was a huge crowd. That line wrapped into the subdivision.
Saying the line was crazy.
It was into the subdivision, but everybody, everybody's happy. I know I had to run and get more candy for the town.
Yeah, we're happy.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right, you did.
Yeah.
Forgot about that.
Uh-huh.
Let's go with it. Yeah. All right. Uh, nothing from Tony, right?
Uh, Tony submitted a report in writing, I believe it's in the packets, Tony's not here. It's there. Tony's report.
Public Works.
If it's on end, there's no report.
I've got it.
But there was a written report.
Branch shipping ended last week, leaf collection is next week, will last a month. Get prepping all the trucks, and they're gonna be putting the punch list together for the sewer expansion. And that's what we have from Tony.
That project turned out really nice, the sewer expansion project, the restoration, the grass is already growing out there. Went out there with Tony today to take a look at it. Looking good.
Your report says substantially complete, correct?
Absolutely substantially complete.
Perfect.
Mr. President.
Sir.
May I recommend that the Public Works report be inserted verbatim into the minutes?
Much.
I think some of us had it, some of us didn't.
I, I put it in my pocket on my, nope, in my folder.
That's where I had it.
Yeah, it wasn't in the...
Oh, okay.
Cheryl told me she did that, I can't, that's my fault.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept Tony's report verbatim, as presented here, and our report.
No, second.
All right. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And Chief Byrd?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, as usual, my September, uh, police report has been submitted for your, uh, your informational packets, and I have nothing other than something quickly, a lot, a lot of calls over the weekend and, uh, today regarding the activity from Friday night, uh, people calling, what were all the police cars, fire trucks, ambulances, and helicopter doing in Winfield? It was a, a police pursuit, a short one, a quick four-block pursuit that got up to pretty high speeds. We had an individual, a twenty-eight-year-old male from Gary, uh, was driving northbound in the southbound lanes of Randolph Street in front of the town hall, and, uh, saw the oncoming traffic, so he drove over the curb, over the center grass in tree-lined island, into the northbound lanes. The officer happened to be there, affected a traffic stop, the car stopped at one-hundred-sixth and Pike. Um, the officer was calling into the Lake County Sheriff's Department the location of his stop, he's getting out ready to approach, and the vehicle took off, north, uh, southbound on Pike Street, blew the stop sign at one-hundred-eighth, blew the stoplight at one-hundred-ninth by the Wendy's Restaurant, and continued southbound into the field, where the vehicle, uh, crashed, rolled, the driver, the sole occupant of the vehicle, was ejected. Kevin's personnel, the police and fire, uh, fire and EMS responded to the scene, and made, because the individual was found somewhat underneath the vehicle, that his injuries were substantial enough that a helicopter was warranted to fly him out of there. And so the University of Chicago, uh, Aero Medical Network, uh, came out and took him to, um, Hyde Park, to the hospital... that a helicopter was warranted to fly him out of there. And so the University of Chicago Aero Medical Network came out and took him to Hyde Park, to the hospital there. And, um, as what would seem to be the usual thing with most people that are intoxicated, on Sunday, he checked out of the hospital against medical advice. And today we had Detective Billups at the hospital with search warrants, obtaining the blood draws from when he was admitted, and will be submitting criminal charges on there. Thank you to the Lake County Sheriff's Department. They did respond to crash reconstructionists, who then put the computers on the vehicle that was wrecked and determined that the individual at the time of the crash was traveling at ninety-nine miles an hour, um, and without braking before the crash occurred. So the gentleman's out of the hospital and he's in the process of being charged by the Winfield Police Department.
Are we gonna go get him?
Pardon me?
Are we gonna go get him?
Yeah, we're gonna get him. Once we, uh, there won't be a problem charging him. By the way, for October of last year, he did the same thing in downtown Griffith, a pursuit, wrecked police cars, wrecked citizens' vehicles.
Habitual offender.
Habitual.
So we're gonna go get him out of Gary?
Uh, when the warrant drops, that's, yeah, we'll fight him. We know where he's at.
Okay. Just so, I, I guess my point is, is that, right, comes into town, affects a chase, driving on the wrong side. It could have been way worse. Thank God it was only him and his dumb decisions that he decided to make. So I want to make sure he doesn't disappear. But if you come into Winfield and you do stupid stuff, then you're gonna get charged accordingly and go to jail. So that's the message, is that we want to affect here. You come into town and you do dumb things, you're gonna pay the price.
Sure.
Thank you, Chief.
And, uh, you know, let the officers know that we appreciate everything that they're doing out there. Thank, you know, thanks to the fire department for being there also. It's, I know it's a messy scenario, especially in, in a town like ours, you know? But it's not something we run into every day. But, you know, appreciate the work you guys are doing. And like Dave said, I think the hope from the council is that we continue to push the message that, that's not gonna fly out here. I mean, maybe you do that in other parts of the county or Cook County or wherever, but not over here. And so we appreciate you guys being diligent about that.
We'll do it. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Chief here, man?
Yeah, to reiterate what Chief Bird said, for how that call played out, everything went very well. His officers over there, too.
You guys just did, I mean, didn't you just do helicopter training?
Yeah, he went to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's.
Thank God this guy didn't know.
Yeah.
You know, AR streets, and he's just like, I'm just gonna go down that road.
Right.
Whoops.
Yeah.
Was it right?
No, definitely was not. Um, you should have the September call stats that I sent over. Last month, we're down by roughly about thirty or forty calls from normal. Bubble was a hundred and twenty-two, sixty-four for the town. Go back through just a few of the other topics that you've been discussing. I'm still waiting on some folks to come back on the ambulance topic. Hope to have those maybe in the next couple of weeks. Kind of been hounding them a little bit to try to get something.
Yeah, it's a little bit more firm.
So we're still waiting on that. Um, we have not finalized the 2026 budget yet. We're still waiting for the fire district contract along with township. Township, I think, will be done by their meeting next week. So we should have that one done. The other one, I don't know.
Are they on, just out of curiosity, are they on two year, are they on a one-year, two-year?
Uh, right now, one. I think we're gonna do two with the township.
Like twenty-seven, twenty-eight or? And what about, um?
I'm sorry, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they'll be through the rest of this. You're negotiating twenty-six, twenty-seven now with them?
Yes.
And then, um, do you, have you guys expanded on, you know, the possibility of our contract or how that works at the township in West Porter or anything like that?
Yeah.
Longevity?
Um, I was waiting to sit down with Trustee Reynolds, which we did last week, to try to gauge where they were gonna be for next year and then the following year, to see where everything needed to sit. So I've got a pretty good idea on what he's projected. So I should be able to get you something on that week or two.
Perfect. And that might actually be a good, having us like two years apart, might actually be perfect to have that kind of staged out for you guys to plan things.
Yeah. And that's ultimately, like we talked about, that's what we're trying to do is just hopefully plan long-term instead of kind of being here at this time of year and saying, well, we still can't finalize the budget for next year because we don't know what we're gonna have.
Right.
Which makes it a little difficult. We're, the ladder truck, we're waiting for a part four. Sensor went bad on one of the outriggers. It's not affecting the use yet. One of them doesn't completely go out. So fingers crossed it doesn't. But that part's at four to six weeks out. We have the holder pumper tanker currently out of service. They're trying to track down a mechanical issue that they can't track down. It's been gone for over a week, so I don't have any answers of a timeline as to when it's gonna be back yet. So we're still waiting to try to figure out what the diagnosis is on that. We did our fire prevention open house a couple of weeks ago. That went very well. I think overall, we had probably the best turnout in the last few years. Weather was perfect and we had a lot of different activities that I think helped. At one point, I want to say we probably had three or four hundred people running around. So overall, it was a pretty good day. And of course, the helicopters showing up helped it, along with some burn houses and cutting a car up. I think all of that, I think, we're pretty interested in. And then, of course, they had the bounce house and they got to the front. So that went well. The next thing we have is, we'll be at trunk or treat Saturday and stop, drop, and donate to do the food collection December sixth. Any questions?
Stop, drop, and donate. Are you guys driving again?
Yes.
We're back.
Yep, we're back. Driving around.
All right. So December sixth, there will be a lot of sirens going off in town, so just, nothing that you need to call about? It's just put food out.
It's not gonna stop anybody.
Yeah. Just put food out.
Yeah, so we're clear.
Yeah.
Where are all the sirens for?
Yeah.
All, all the community pages will be lighting up with it, so.
Yeah, we try to advertise it way ahead of time, but some people don't look.
What's like the emergency alert system, you know? You know it goes off once a month, but you still are like, should I be worried?
What are the sirens for on Tuesday at noon?
Right, right, right.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
All right, on to unfinished, deferred business. Update on the 2024 Hundred Ninth and Green Place Roundabout.
The punch list is complete. Uh, Nick, just, Milestone just needs to make sure they got all the M O T signings taken down now.
And then we gotta get the final balancing change order together and close the project out and release retainage. Hopefully get all that together for next month's meeting.
Very good.
Is the monument sign part of that?
We talked to trees and they did not want the old one back up.
They don't want the old one back up. I think their plan is to maybe incorporate that into a new sign.
That's a different process down the road.
Right. We, uh, we are not, as I said, I reported at the last meeting, we are not in possession of the existing tree sign. So they have it. I'm not sure where it is. They took it down before the project started.
So it sounds like we can close this out without worrying about that. Thank you.
Yeah, but do we need to put a, do we need to communicate to them that they need to put a sign up, considering we made every subdivision have a sign?
I don't think usually that's a, it's not a requirement that we make developers do that. Oftentimes developers want to do that as a marketing.
Yeah, but we, we actually called somebody's bond and put the sign up.
Because they said they were gonna do it, and they didn't do it.
I understand. I'm just bringing it that, hey, everybody's got a sign. So if the question comes up and says, well, why doesn't trees have to put a sign up? I'm not saying they will or they won't. I'm just saying, do we want to give them, hey, we understand you guys want to maybe put a new sign up on your dime, which is great. Do we want to give them, hey, get that done in the next twelve months?
I don't think, I mean, if you're asking me, I would probably.
I'm just bringing it up.
I would probably wouldn't do that.
I have no, I don't care one way or the other, but I am bringing it up in that we do require every subdivision to have a sign. So that's.
I don't think we require that, just so it's clear.
Whatever. It seems to be part of every subdivision that gets a.
They're allowed, they're, they're allowed to propose.
The next one, I'm gonna make specific. I'm gonna call, make a couple of phone calls and go, hey, don't put a sign up. Let's see what happens.
They'll say, no, we wanted to sell houses.
Maybe.
That's why they, that's why they put up the sign.
Anyway, moving on. I just bring it up.
The flip side of that question, though, that we don't have any financial responsibility for the sign at all.
No.
I'd sort of make, make it clear that we're not.
Crystal.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
We need anything to be signed? It's like, we don't have anything?
By who? There's no H O A?
I'm just, just, I'm just following Zach's point here, just thinking through it all.
I, I get it. We, we have a substantial amount of communication between the handful of presidents who are spearheading this and it's clear.
All right, very good. Thank you, sir. Update, item number two, update on 2025 C C M G. On?
Project's substantially complete. They're route, doing some seeding, I think, last week. Uh, they still have a few sprinkler systems to get repaired. I was hoping to have an update on the entire list, but I have not received that yet from Milestone.
Did they get the striping done?
Think the striping was done.
Is it or isn't it done?
I believe it is. I'll double check.
It's a still or maybe.
So is there, um, what's kind of the status on, there's several homes, I think, affected by the sprinkler issue.
I've been on, like, every day.
So we have two payments here tonight for Milestone.
Yeah.
Do we still have retainage or anything else?
There's a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars worth of retainage, wikis.
Perfect. All right. So it's okay to pay the bill and we still have enough money to make sure we just, we need to go fix it, we can go fix it.
Okay.
Very good.
No questions.
On to new business. Second reading and consideration of adoption and approval of ordinance three seventy-nine. Nick?
This is second reading for the budget as well as approval of supplemental of the excess levy appeal petitions. So I've kind of gone over this the past couple of meetings. We had a three-year growth levy with the extension of services levy. And we have the budget itself. So it's sort of an order that this has to go. You have to approve some of the petitions, each one individually, and then approval of the budget.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I, I've confirmed with the financial advisor that it has been reviewed and checked off. And for what it's worth, category. So the record's clear.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Make a motion that we adopt ordinance, Resolution Number three seventy-nine, entitled only. I will read the minor paragraph here, so we have it. Be ordained, resolved by the Winfield Civil, uh, Civil Town that, for the expenses of Winfield Civil Town for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, the sums herein specified hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out the several funds herein named and for purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Want me to read the rest of it? I'm more than happy.
You don't have to, but my recommendation would be, it likewise be, the text likewise be inserted into the minutes.
I will add to my motion that the texts are inserted into the minutes.
And I would say inclusive of other petitions for the extension of services levy appeal.
Exactly what Nick said.
Let's go first.
Does go first technically.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Dave and a second by Tim. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries.
Item number two, consideration of.
Sir. The adopted budget will now go to Indianapolis, probably by pigeon carrier tomorrow morning. It has to be there tomorrow.
Electronic pigeon carrier.
You know what I meant.
I know.
I'm gonna need to hit the enter button.
Just so the council is aware, the budget will not be approved by the, by the D L G F until the levy appeals have been decided. So we will not know on either, probably until mid, mid-December.
Oh, good.
And I think one of, one of the clarifying, I just to touch on the levy appeal, right, is, I mean, that's, one of the hopes is that we kind of free up some money for public safety.
Yes.
That kind of thing. So the hope is that we can kind of work on this public safety funding piece and then hope to find out at the same time what our budget is gonna be.
Right after that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I would use, I would use the term strategy instead of hope.
Yes.
And this. Strategy we have is.
Yeah, 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 that's fair. That's a fair thing, sir.
And because of S V one, this will be our last levy appeal.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, so going back to that Senate Bill one.
Right.
They got rid of all that.
Yes.
This can't be done again after this year. You no longer ask permission to spend more money.
Under the current law, that is the case. Who knows what the law will be next year?
Right.
That is correct. They may, they may change it.
Another one.
All right, on to item number two, consideration of pay application number one, Milestone, twenty twenty-five C C M G. Sean?
Uh, this pay up is for the removal of the curb and gutter, sidewalk, um, the milling of the pavement, asphalt, going back in, majority of it, and then most of the concrete replacement work. And it is the amount of one million, twenty thousand dollars, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-five cents.
Are you sure, Sean? We know where you live.
Yeah.
All right.
I don't, you got a hundred and thirteen left.
I know we're short on that. I'll make, I'll make a motion that we pay, pay application number one for Milestone, uh, twenty twenty-five C C M G road project in the amount of one million, twenty thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-five cents.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Dave and a second by Tim. Any discussion?
Just before, just before we get into it, then the next one is part of the same projects?
Yes.
Okay.
Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. Item number three, consideration of pay application number two.
Make, um, I'll just make a motion to pay, pay application number two, based on what Sean said earlier, uh, for the twenty twenty-five C C M G road project in the amount of one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-four cents.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Dave and a second by Tim. Any discussion?
My only question is, what's left after this?
They haven't built the striping and there's a couple of storm sewer outlets. They haven't built.
And retainage and all that.
Yeah.
So I would communicate back to them that they don't really fix, get on the, get it done. If you have to keep pugging them and nagging them, then we're just not gonna pay. They want their money.
They've been pretty good.
I mean, they have been, but at this point, it's small stuff. And I'm sure they moved on. They're trying to finish before everything shuts down. I get it, but just, you know.
Yep.
Lot of fire.
Pretty much remind them every day that, yeah, you got some.
At some point, they want their money.
Yep.
Well, especially the sprinkler thing, too, because it's like, we got, you know, that's not directly like in the road. I mean, this is like damaged private property that we gotta, you know, we need to take care of for the residents.
Well, the other part of it.
The other problem with sprinklers is that can be a lingering problem into next year.
Right. Oh, it's too cold, the ground's frozen, it's, yeah.
You're not there yet, but you're getting close because now they're going around blowing those sprinkler systems out.
Yeah.
And, and now it's a, now it's a real problem.
Right.
You won't know until the spring until there's a big old leak and then you're like, okay, gotta come back.
Sinkhole or something.
Yeah, and then the, so, yeah.
All right. Very good. Item number four, first reading of ordinance three eighty, building standards update. Nick?
Staff has requested to take a look at sort of a wide array of things, uh, within the building department, kind of zoning and planning, fees, standards, and contractor registration. I'm just go, the, this first one mainly has to do with, uh, just kind of site standards. Think, I saw a picture recently of a project in town where there's kind of trash blowing everywhere. That, that can't happen when the dumpsters aren't emptied in time. Building Department did, went through the exercise of kind of researching some best practices that other cities and towns do as far as maintenance, uh, keeping things clean, having proper amount of restrooms. Because we have these big, huge sites where maybe there's one porta john. Because we have these big, huge sites where maybe there's one porta john. People have to get in their truck to go, you know, you kind of want it a little closer. So I don't want to read it all verbatim, but that's, uh, what these modifications kind of speak to. And also creates a fine for early occupancy of a structure that does not have an official occupancy. So people going in, moving in, maybe even trying to live in there before they have the occupancy. We've had problems with that in the past. And no real stick.
Yeah.
That provides the stick.
And now we will have a stick.
Yeah, so this is just first reading.
Bring baseball back. I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve ordinance number, uh, three eighty on first reading. An ordinance, entitled, an ordinance amending town code Title fifteen, Chapter one fifty-one, entitled Building Regulations Construction. And specifically amending sections one five one point two oh and one five one point four eight, entitled Standards and Certificate of Occupancy Compliance Required Respectively Establishing Technical Revisions to the Building Standards for the Town and Replacing All Town Code Section Ordinances or Parts Thereof in Conflict With, Here With, in All Matters Related There To. Do you think I had that last part ingrained in my head? Second.
I have a motion by Dave and a second by Tim. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carries. Item number five, first reading of ordinance three eighty-one, fee schedules. Nick?
Uh, the last time that the town council or the town really looked in depth at its fee structures was fee schedules and the amounts we charge for certain things was before I started here. So in excess of eleven years ago. If you look at the citations, I have some of the citations listed. You know, probably going back into the early two thousands on some of this stuff last time it was touched. So this is a complete go-through of all fees to the building department, all application fees to the offices of zoning and planning. And if you have any questions, let me know. But this is a first reading. I know it's a lot. There's a lot to that. This one took a while.
Yeah. Yeah, you guys did a lot of work on this.
Yep. Make a motion that we approve ordinance number three eighty-one, entitled only. An ordinance amending town code Title fifteen, Chapter one fifty, entitled General Provisions, and specifically, uh, let's see, specifically amending sections one fifty, then dot two-two, one fifty dot two-three, one fifty dot two-four, two-five, two-six, and two-seven, entitled Permit Expiration Residential and Ag District Fees, Commercial M one and A G dash B district fees, Fire Prevention Bureau Inspection Fees, Plan Commission Fees, Board of Zoning Appeal Fees, respectively establishing technical revisions to the fee schedule requirements and calculations for the town and repealing all town code sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith and all matters related thereto.
Second. We have a motion by Dave and a second by Tim. Uh, the one thing I would add to this is I appreciate all the work, staff and legals done on that. I know it's a ton. This is a heavy lift going through all these numbers that nobody's touched for years. So I appreciate that. Uh, the other thing is, Chris, this is kind of one of the things we're talking about when we're doing this comprehensive review on just town finances, how to, what are we behind on? What are we, what can we be more efficient on? This is one of the things that staff and the town council identified as something that we could look into, you know, kind of rightsizing, where you look at other communities, and you don't necessarily always want to be on parity with every other neighbor, but in this case, it was something where we looked, and some of our fees were substantially behind. So it was like, well, you know, what are we missing out on? Or what are we not able to provide residents just because we haven't updated our fees in a little while? And then keeping in mind the potential impacts from Senate Enrolled Act One, where, so you're doing all these things kind of in conjunction, and I think that's what, that's what we're getting to this ordinance now. So, um, that's the only point I have.
No, you're good.
And, uh, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carries. Item number six, first reading of ordinance three eighty-two. Nick?
Uh, this is sort of another fee area of the code, dealing with contractor registration exclusively. So revising those and those.
Make a motion that we approve ordinance number three eighty-two on first reading. Ordinance amending, title code Title eleven, Chapter one eleven, entitled Building and Construction Contractors, and specifically amending sections one eleven dot one seven and one eight, entitled Residential Exploration and Renewal and Registration Fees, respectively establishing technical revisions to the contractor registration of the town and replacing all town code sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith and all matters related thereto.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carries. Item number seven.
Just real quick, the public hearing for all three of those will take place at the November twelfth council meeting. It's a Wednesday. We had to reschedule because of Veterans Day, which falls on that Tuesday, which is our normal day.
Very good. November twelfth. Thank you, Nick. Uh, item number seven, consideration of engagement with Bose Public Affairs Group. Uh, like I've kind of mentioned before, this is part of the town's ongoing effort to ensure that we're represented, uh, not just locally with elected officials, but also down in Indianapolis with State House and other government agencies that we may need to, um, state our case to. So this engagement is for Bose to assist us in that effort. Sir?
It's really important for us and for your residents that you identify the parameters very narrowly on the engagement. You don't want them to have a slow day in Indianapolis and start working on coal mining or something such as that. There's enough to do. There's a lot to do. There's a lot we need them to do. And I would encourage and advise that before they even start, it's really clear.
Very good. Thank you, Dave.
Make a motion that we enter into engagement with Bose Public Affairs Group.
Second. We have a motion by Dave, second by Tim. Any discussion?
We just say the, uh, the engagement letter is in the packet and can be entered into the minutes.
Very good. I will amend my second to include that.
Look, you didn't need to. I was just making.
I gotta look. I gotta look, so.
It's there. Public record.
All right. Thank you, guys. Uh, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carries. Public comment. Anybody wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
You've used your time?
First quarter in, sixty-seven, forty-fourth, Erie Creek Court. For first readings of ordinances, is that just to introduce something that needs to be discussed relating to town business or anything, and then there's a public hearing, a second reading?
Yeah, there's not public hearing on everyone. Sometimes you can, if it requires a public reading, you do the first reading first, then you have to do the public hearing, and then you do the second reading. But a lot of ordinances, you can just do first reading, suspend the rules, and then approve it on the second reading.
Okay. So you approve the first reading?
Yeah.
There's only gonna be a second reading?
Yeah, there has to be a public hearing, though.
You need a lot of public hearing as well?
Yeah, that has to happen for this particular set of ordinances.
So then I could come to that and ask more questions?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. That's really what it's for, is for the public to, I, I mean, I don't know the exact, you know, guardrails of it, but zoning stuff, a lot of the zoning requirements, planning commission stuff that comes to the council, those do require hearings. And so, you know, like if you're gonna rezone, or you're gonna, you're gonna do, um, certain districts or something like that. And so the purpose of the public hearing is so that anybody who knows of it can come and say, hey, I don't, I don't want you to rezone this, and here's why, or I don't want this purpose because of whatever.
It's not all meant to be bad. It's like.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hey, I want you to do this, because of this.
Right, right, right.
Or just asking what?
Yeah, what are you doing?
Yes, right, yeah, okay.
I mean, part of what we're doing is raising the fees on developers and other things, and so.
Got it. Thank you.
Good. Claims.
All right, Mike?
Uh, good evening, everyone. For your review, consideration, and approval, this month we've got fourteen pages of claims for the total amount of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and six dollars and eighty-six cents. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pay the claims in the amount of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and six thousand, eighty-six cents.
We have a motion by Tim.
I'll make a second.
And a second by Dave. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carries. And our next town council meeting will be Tuesday, uh, this is Tuesday.
It is Wednesday, November twelfth.
Wednesday, November twelfth, at seven P M.
It's Wednesday.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.